Township Board of Supervisors Public Work Session for January 27, 2021. This is Ray Weldy of the Board of Supervisors. I have 7:06 PM.
Mr. Weldy, sorry. If you could start over, it would be great. It took a couple of seconds to start recording. Go ahead.
Thank you, Peter. Welcome to the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Public Work Session for January 27, 2021. It's 7:06 PM. This is Ray Weldy of the Board of Supervisors. We'll be holding a work session from now until approximately 7:30 before the public meeting. And at that point, I'll announce that Supervisor Sue Cummings, Kim Koutseradis, Deb Kaplan, and Ed Shannon are live with me, with Solicitor Frank Dillon and some other participants. Right now, I'll turn it over. I believe the Township Manager is absent due to a medical issue today. The way I understand it, there was supposed to be at least two issues that were brought up in the work session. One is an update from our Building Code Office, OBCO Mike Atalia, about the transition from engineering firms on the decision that was made on January 4th from Tri-State to CKS, and the progress that's being made in some open cases. And the other is, I believe, a discussion about a proposed food truck ordinance that was presented to the board in early March of 2020. And due to COVID and everything that's happened in fallout, that ordinance, proposed ordinance has sat. And we were planning to speak about that in this work session if time permits. So Mike Atalia, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thanks, Ray. My camera's not working tonight, so you can't see my bald head, unfortunately, but hopefully you all can hear me. So yeah, the transition's going pretty well. We're tying up any loose ends, getting the projects moved over. It's really, you know, we're all the department heads, myself, Mark McDonald, and Matt are all, you know, working with Tri-State CKS, trying to get everything moving. You know, for the most part, good cooperation, no issues on my end. It's just, some of it's just time consuming and we gotta, you know, kind of get it done. But, you know, all sides are being amicable. We are still trying to wrap up that legal issue in reference to the Wawa and the materials inspection firm. We're trying to get them moving. Frank Dillon's been facilitating that. I'm not anticipating any issues, but you know, it's a day-by-day cases on things.
Mike, is there anything specific that the board should know about or the public should know about regarding its transitions? As far as open cases or the switch over from Tri-State to CKS, or is your summary adequate?
The only thing that we would ask is if any of the public or the businesses are experiencing a lag or a delay from Tri-State of things being inspected. Now, I haven't heard anything, but if for some reason they're not fulfilling that agreement, they need to let us know right away so that we can address it. We have not seen that as of yet, but we're just want to make sure that that's okay.
Okay. And just so we understand, is cases that Tri-State had toward the end of 2020, through 2020 up until January 4th, are they seeing those cases through to their conclusion? Or are they stopping where they're at and turning those cases over to CKS?
I'll give you an example, like Citadel. It was in the planning stages. So the planning stages, they are wrapping up. However, CKS will do the construction part since it's a separate phase. But yeah, we have tried. It doesn't make sense to swap them out of projects that they would be seeing. And then by the time we would bring CKS up to speed, you know, we're spending frontless dollars at that point. So, you know, I'm just, we're trying to blend it. If there's an issue, then we'll act on it. Otherwise, we're just letting them follow it through.
Thanks, Mike. I don't know if the board members or anyone else has any questions.
I have a comment. Another example that is, there's a, we're dealing with an issue on the roads and the payment to Marcy. John Genovese has worked on that the entire time. John is still working on that. I was in contact with him today. There's been exchange of emails. We're trying to sort through. I think it's a $28,000 approval of payment of a bill that's got to be resolved. And he's been on that. He'll finish that.
Is there anything going on with the townhouses that are at Buck Road and Bridgetown?
Not that I'm aware of. Are you talking about what you and I discussed on the phone, Ed?
Yeah, there's something going on there. Yes, right.
Nothing going on there. So David Tour has bought some property and is going to be coming in with a plan. He hasn't shown us the plan. That's what you and I talked about, that there's going to be possible development in that area. So obviously, something's going on, but he's doing everything within his rights. He's obtaining the properties in that area to do some sort of project. We're just waiting for him to come in. That's all.
Well, he's torn down that house, right? That's there.
That was in bad shape. Yeah. The fire department got in there, did some exercises, and then, yeah. So that's, he's obviously getting ready to make a move, but it's a private real estate transaction. And until he comes in with a plan, it's speculation at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll keep you in the loop. As soon as I get something, you'll know.
All right. Appreciate it.
And Ed, you asked me about Brownsville Road and Pertucci. I followed up with a phone call to them. They are still working on a presentation to give us an idea of what they envision along Brownsville Road. They had a meeting the other day. They weren't satisfied, but they told me to let you know that they were still working.
All right. Well, Debbie and I were out there and they showed a lot of interest at that time that they would be willing and interested in helping us create a town center format in that Brownsville Road area from bustle down to the ice cream place.
Mike, can I ask you a question? Mike Atalia?
Absolutely.
Okay. Item number three on tonight's agenda, which is the sketch plan for back in the back end around there on Andrews Road, back by Verizon. Is there anything, since we're speaking about that type of thing now, is there anything we should know?
Yeah. So the design engineer is on here. So basically, that's the old stormwater basin there that is just completely overgrown and it's like thicket and whatnot. So the sketch plan went over very well from the planning commission. Full support it. Justin's going to be talking about redesigning that entire stormwater basin to bring it up to standards. Very feasible. It would be a storage warehouse, not a ton of traffic in and out of there. You know, a couple of jobs being brought in, but to use that site as a good tax base type of operation. And Justin can explain a little bit more about that when it comes up on the agenda. So I invited him and the new engineer, John Eivarts, in for discussion on that.
Thank you.
Also, I did want to mention that the car wash next to Citadel is abandoning that proposal. So we're going to be getting that termination agreement or, you know, notification from the car wash soon. It was something between the car wash and Citadel that cannot be worked out.
Okay.
Hey, Mike, are we doing something with the food truck?
Yeah. You want me to go right into that, Ray?
Well, can we kind of combine that with the food truck ordinance so we don't run out of time before 7:30 maybe? Because they seem to be related somewhat.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So as you're aware, a food truck has popped up at the Getty by right. They did apply for an application and it is approved. He had to provide the documentation from the health department and all those type of things for inspections. Joe made me aware that Jeff had previously started to put together a food truck ordinance. So I had to go resurrect that one and find it, and I did. So that's what you have there. I just gave Joe what Jeff had. I had no time to refresh it, bring it up to date with the 2015 codes or any of those type of things.
Yeah.
I think it's a good ordinance. I recently did one in Red Hill, Montgomery County, because they were popping up all over the place and we wanted to kind of get them into one location because you don't want those spread out throughout the township. But I can tell you, near where I live in Doylestown Township, we have several that set up over the weekends in the shopping centers, like a lobster one, you know, kind of a decent, really nice food trucks. They seem to go over very well. So if we can corral them and organize them, I think it would pay dividends and, you know, things would be on the up and up at that point.
Well, I think one of the things we have to be concerned about is the business that are there, and they're not happy.
Well, yeah, I mean, from a competition standpoint, they would actually have to get permission from the shopping centers to set up. If for some reason they wanted to go like the Acme or, you know, across the street, they would actually have to get permissions from the property owners to shut up shop there.
Yeah. Well, you get the hamburger place right across the street from this one. So they're not happy either. And the Buffalo is not crazy about it either, you know. I mean, I know they're two different types of buildings, but, you know, they pay a lot more taxes than a food cart.
Well, since Mike's already worked on an ordinance, we should probably think, we should take a look at it and see if it suits our needs and modify it as necessary to, you know, suit the needs of Lower South.
Yeah, I can hand it over to you. We just got to figure out where we want them. That's the biggest thing. Because you don't want to be exclusionary. You have to allow them somewhere.
Yeah, you can't throw them out altogether, Ed.
Jeff Bartlett, Frank, I don't know if maybe he was incorrect, but in his original ordinance proposal, he stated that if the board chooses to not move in this direction, it would be prudent to specifically exclude food trucks from all zoning districts. Banning food trucks in all districts could be challenged in court by a potential food truck vendor, but the township would be able to defend that case easier than having no reference to food trucks at all.
Yeah.
Well, I've never looked up whether or not you can exclude food trucks. As a general rule in zoning, you're not allowed to have a total exclusion. You have to provide some place in the municipality where use is allowed. But we will look at that and we'll report back to you.
Okay. And Mike, how long is this permit? Is this permit limited? Is there a time limit on the permit that was issued to the food cart by the Buck Hotel intersection?
Your ordinance allows them as for like 12 months. They're almost treated like Jack and Jill, like the ice cream guys. It's very similar. It all falls under the same thing.
Is there a certain amount of them?
That's really what we have right now. That and Mr. Softy or the ice cream guy that goes around, those are the only two I have. I haven't heard back from the ice cream fellow.
Would we decide that we would cap a limit of?
Yeah, I think you would. Yeah, absolutely. I think you would, but you also have some of the breweries popping up where that, you know, they don't have food on site and they'll bring like a food truck in for a weekend. Typically, if they're on private property, I don't know, I would defer to Frank about that if we have any reach there or how that works.
Well, every graduation party I go to has a food truck these days on private property. And I don't know that that's something we would stop if someone wants to do it for a limited period of time on their property, but.
What we've been doing for years is they're not allowed at the parade. They have to get a permit for the one day to even be at the parade.
Yep. And just to expand on what Sue said, I think we reduce that timeframe and we break it out. We say, you know, the ice cream guys could be a year long, mobile food vendors could be a shortened period of time, which is what we did in Red Hill. The fire company there has like a food truck festival and that's what spawned that. So that permit is only valid for like, sorry, Deb, like seven days.
And we have the food trucks at the second Friday of Play Wiki.
Right.
But that would be different.
Yeah, it would be different. That's a one-time thing.
Oh, no, I understand that. But I'm just saying, when Mike said on private property, you know, I'm just kind of comparing that we have on township property, even though it's a one-time thing. If private property has a one-time thing, parties or something like that, like Mike was saying, birthday parties.
And Mike, the question I was thinking of is, notwithstanding all the other temporary food trucks, a food truck such as, you know, you issued the permit for, if that's there for a long period of time, let's say one month, three months, six months, are they responsible or is there any way to audit or to compel them to be responsible for any business or mercantile tax toward that the township would be entitled to, or would they be exempt from that?
I don't think so, because the definition of transient is anything less than 30 days. So if they're setting up shop and they're here, I can assure you, the city of Philadelphia isn't missing out on any tax revenue coming out of those vendors. So I could look at it with Frank and see what our legal, you know, process would be. Saying, listen, if you're going to park in one spot for 30 days, you've got to comply with the business taxes, just like every other restaurant in Lower South.
Yeah, because I'd be concerned with the enforcement of that and the validity of the numbers that would be given to the township. You know, I don't know if there's any way to verify any of that, or do we just have to take someone's word?
Honestly, Ray, we couldn't make those permits valid for up to 30 days. And you can only have them, you know, you can only reapply after so many months or something like that. So once we fine tune your ordinance, we could probably do something to kind of keep them moving along so they don't just drop anchor in one spot.
Yeah, well, it sounds like that's what they did. So, yeah, I'm glad we can create an ordinance for it. Right.
Absolutely.
Is that something, Mike, and I don't mean to paint you into a corner, but is that something that you're looking to do? I don't know, sometime, let's say, before April?
Sure. That better be a big corner you paint me in, by the way. But yeah, no, we can do it.
I was going to say February 10th, but that's why I hemmed and hawed till April.
I got a fee schedule revision coming out, one thing at a time. No, I think we can get it before it gets warm, if that's what you're getting at. Sure.
How long is the permit that they currently have?
A year. That's what your ordinance allows. It's an annual permit.
And is there any taxes involved with that or no?
There's a fee. Yep.
And do you have any feel for how long, how much that is relative to a local business?
No.
Well, the local business has real estate taxes, but we also have the mercantile tax and I forget what the other tax is. And I never frankly gave it a thought in regards to those taxes applying to something. But if it's there a year, that's something we have to look at as part of developing this program.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Not a problem.
How much is a permit for the year?
I'd have to look at your fee schedule. I'll get it for you. Hold on. I'll figure it out.
I was just didn't know offhand. I was just curious. I don't have any idea.
That's okay.
And I think I have six, five minutes, I don't know, four or five minutes left. Matt, if Matt has any, Matt Gilbert, if, Matt, can you hear me?
Yep, I'm here.
Matt, I don't know if you want to use two or three minutes to say anything about the proposed pool contracts for Fertabar and the Dolphin for 2021. Now would be the time.
Just so you guys know what was included in your packet and kind of how Christina laid it in there. The most important things that we're looking at tonight is really the cover sheet, which is part one. And then the special notes is part D of special one. And then there is the last pages, which is the 2021 addendum. We spent a lot of time going back and forth and negotiating with the American pools. Last year, they, you know, worked with us in that cancellation and the fee that was assessed at that time. This year, to push that back to April 15th to have the cancellation be at, or at April 15th for no fee, although they do want some formal approval so they can begin recruiting and hiring and seeing which staff they're going to retain for the Dolphin Swim Club and for the Fertabar Pool. Again, the biggest thing in this packet, you know, aside from the price of the contract, is the addendum portion. So there's an addendum. They're both the same. One is for the Fertabar contract, one's for the Dolphin contract. And I think by April 15th, you know, with the hopes that the vaccination spreads and the actual positive test results reduces, hopefully we'll have a pretty good picture of what the summer's going to look like come April 15th.
Is there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Matt, at what level do you have to operate in order for this to be successful? Is it 100%, 50%?
We could get away with, you know, a 50% model. Obviously, things would be a little bit different as far as how we move the guests in and out, whether they were assigned a timeframe or it was strictly, what a lot of facilities that did manage to open last year, while they struggled immensely, it, they basically got rid of the season passes and everyone was a daily pass. So you could regulate exactly how many people could enter and how many people could not. That way, you didn't have the guests or season pass holders who brought guests who then, by the time that a season pass holder got there, they weren't able to enter due to capacity. So it would absolutely be something that was taken into consideration before April 15th as to how we would proceed.
Is there something in there, Matt, about the, whether the governor is going to determine who comes in and who doesn't?
Well, ultimately, the CDC and the Department of Health regulate what they consider to be a gathering. Now, there's gathering for indoors and there's gathering for outdoors. Right now, we're limited to 50 people outdoor. If that number were to hold through the summer months, we would not be able to financially responsibly operate the facility. No. With hopes that that number would increase, meaning it would allow more to gather in an outdoor environment. I think that it could be done safely. You know, we're all still pretty sure COVID's still going to be present. We're still going to be sanitizing and mask wearing and social distancing. But we have enough room down there at the Dolphin to socially distance a lot of people. It's just what they determined to be that number, which was the biggest prohibitive factor last year. So.
Well, is that part of the contract?
Essentially, by April 15th, we'll know whether or not we're going to be able to operate that. There is not a number written in the contract. No, we're using a date of April 15th.
Matt, I have a question for you. What happens if, you know, we get some some good information and we decide to open and then in the middle of the summer, the numbers rise again and everything changes? And, you know, do we have any type of, any type of plan, any type of escape plan that would help us if, you know, we deemed it, you know, unable to no longer stay open?
There are certain things that we could do to mitigate some expenses, but honestly, the majority of the expenses, with the exception of, you know, payroll, we see those expenses in April, May, and the beginning of June as we're ramping up to opening full-time. Once the facility's open, the pools are full, the pumps are on. It's, the money's been spent. So it would be, it would be a difficult position. Although I feel that having the time and seeing the difficulties that some of the people faced, some of the other facilities that did or chose to operate last year and they got over some of those hurdles, I think that it's something that can be done safely and it's something that can be done fiscally responsibly. But we'll know more come April 15th, when that decision's finalized.
So, Kim, the contract provides $41,000 April 15th, then $27,000 a month. So April's, you know, you're not open, you've got 40 down. May 15th, you got, you're 67 in. And by June 15th, you got another 27. So you're up 77, you're up to almost $100,000 by June 15th.
Yeah, but Frank, and I think what Kim's, what I was, what I'm interested in too is if, let's say on July 4th, just for yucks, you know, it hits the fan and the numbers are high enough and they shut things down. On July 15th, we'd owe 27. On August 15th, we'd owe 13. We'd owe another 41 grand. Does the closure, there's a section in here under closures and acts of God, and there's a thing called force majeure or something at the end, which also has to do with things that are beyond the township's control. Would they apply for us to try to recoup or try to save paying that $41,000 should the pools be closed for something we had no control over?
The way this language contract is written under paragraph 16 liquidated damages, they keep everything they've got and they're entitled to collect the rest of the money. That's the way.
So they are at no risk and all the risk falls on the township.
Once you commit, you're, you know, you're biting off a big chunk. And I haven't been involved in the negotiations. Matt has, so he may know some things I don't.
That's something that concerns me a little bit just because of, you know, what we're up against now and.
Me too.
You know, God forbid, you know, I mean, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. We all want to stay positive and think, you know, everything will be honky-dory, but I would hate for us to spend, you know, $100,000 without any type of protection on our end.
Well, and you know, the thing with that too, Matt, is remember what we had to go through last year, giving people money back? You know, they paid money in and now you got to go through that big process of giving them that money back.
Absolutely. And believe me, nobody has a crystal ball. I'm uncertain of what is going to happen through the summer months. If we look at last summer as a model, things actually were, you know, as far as positive test results go in the lower side, and we didn't see that spike come back until the end of September, almost October. Is that going to be exactly how things play out this summer? Again, I don't know.
Frank, under part 21 in this contract, if you can just take a look at it for a second, you know, because I was just going to ask you this anyway. But under part 21, and I'm not a lawyer, that's why I'm asking you, there's something called force majeure. And under that, it says, if the contractor can't do its obligations because of an act of God, some other natural disaster, blah, blah, blah. Okay, the owner's sole remedy, which is us, will be the return of any deposits made by the owner. So if we're making these monthly deposits for this coverage and there's an act of God such as this virus that's beyond our control, wouldn't we legally be entitled to get those deposits back? Is that what force majeure is or is that some other mumbo?
Force majeure is something I'm foreseeing. You don't know what's going to happen. But there's other clauses in here that say they get to keep what they've received already. There's, this contract is not clear enough that we're going to approve it tonight. We have to tighten up these clauses because they're conflicting. I mean, I know from discussions with Matt that whatever they receive to date, they want to keep. Is that correct, Matthew?
Correct. That would be their expectation. Yes.
So this is their contract, I take it. Sounds like it. So this is, this is their contract, I take it. Sounds like it just covers them, not, not us.
It's, it was a lot to work with them, believe me, to, to get that termination addendum on the uh, the end there. And also with the flexibility of the fee schedule. Uh, it's, it's, they were a little more flexible than they were in previous years, I'll say that.
Yeah, I think.
I think it's safe to say, Matt, uh, the board's interested, they'd like to keep it open, but we're not, we can't sign the contract in this form. And we have to tighten up the language and. Um. That's all I have to say on that.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
I would, I would absolutely, I would need more direction as to what, what specifically would be tightened up. I understand the dollar amounts that we laid out there and I understand the timeline. Uh, I.
Well, well, I, I think we would, and I don't want to speak for the board, but me, I would be interested in some type of protection. For the municipality, should the pool season be forced to shut down or closed? Because of a resurgence of the virus. Why, why should we pay another twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars a month for something that we had nothing to do with?
Correct. From like the governor, not just Lower South decided that, but was mandated something from the governor.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and, and it's still going to be CDC guidelines, we know that, you know, it's not going to be open. It's just not going to be, not that we have a crystal ball, but we do know there's going to be guidelines. They're not going to go away this summer.
No, we're certain that we're still going to be mask wearing, we're still going to be social distancing, uh, elevated levels of sanitization. The, they're all things that I can plan for, no problem. The only, the, the number one factor is uh, how many are permitted to gather outdoors.
Exactly.
And, and if that number were to change uh, it, for the, you know, reduction. Um, that would obviously reduce their revenue, which would change our business model and. Ultimately affect the, the bottom line of, of the summer. I understand.
I just want to remind.
I think the other thing too is that we need to share in this. You know, it's not, it's not all us, they're going to be hurting, we're going to be hurting, but that should, there should be some sharedness. In uh, how much money we pay when, when something for both of us is beyond our control.
Well, I don't want to hurt at all financially.
Well, nobody does, I mean, it's.
No, but I'm saying I don't want to put us in a position that we're going to lose so much money. We, that's, I, I, I can't, I can't see that I would be okay with us losing a lot of money. And not sharing the mon, sharing losing money, I don't want to lose money for our township.
We don't share the revenue, I mean. There's got to be a.
Of course we wouldn't.
Yeah, but there, there has to be.
That wouldn't make any sense.
There needs to be a give and take though, should a situation arise that is be out of our control and their control. To, to, so that we wouldn't be responsible for paying for something, we're on a closed pool.
Understood. Let me, let me go back and um. Essentially, I'm just going to talk to the regional manager from American Pool and once this video is up onto the website. I'm going to tell him to watch this segment and we can then have a conversation and hopefully. Agree to a more amicable contract that the board will be willing to move forward on. I, I don't, the price is going to change. Um, if anything, waiting on the, the agreement, the signature of this agreement. Uh, it's probably going to increase the price, but I will continue to diligently try and uh, get something together for approval here.
Well, we're not responsible for anything until Feb, April 15th anyway, right?
Financially, uh, they do want an agreement signed in their office, that way they can move forward with recruiting and staffing and uh. You know, they purchase chemicals in a, in a large lot and they count us into that purchase, so there. There's a lot of things that happen before the season, like I was saying to Kim, and probably seventy-five percent of the expenses happen in, in April and May. Beginning of June.
Well, and.
It's just kind of happening, we got the.
But the, the problem, I think the problem the board has is their expenses are front loaded, but so are the payments. We're a hundred grand in by June 15th and. And that's a difficult decision.
Yep, no, and that's, that's maybe something I can talk to them about and, and try and spread that out and get a little bit. Less in the front and more toward the middle to the end of the operating season where, you know, the, ultimately would be the part that changes, so.
I think we also need legal ease in this, with this too, Frank.
Yeah, the, the, the contract's inconsistent, we, you know, so Matt and I will work on it and get back to you the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Oh, wait, what, how are we going to handle agenda item? I don't have an agenda in front of me, is it three?
Two, I think, I think right now we should table it because, you know, it's, there's, it's not going anywhere tonight.
So we should postpone it, we should postpone it, not table it, yeah.
Okay, not table. Make a motion to postpone that agenda item, okay. Thank you.
Uh, are we ready to move into the regular meeting? Does a board have anything else that wanted to bring up in the work session?
No.
No? Kim, uh, Deb, Sue and Ed were good?
All right, one, one question, why does the library want to change its uh, day for a meeting? Is there some reason for that?
Well, I think Gary Berman, Gary Berman, Dr. Berman is going to be at the meeting, I believe.
I, I can speak to that now.
Yeah.
The uh, the friends of the library, they meet on the second Tuesday. And that's usually a large meeting and members of the board also attend that meeting. And that was the same day that our meeting was scheduled to be held. And often that runs over and, and so we feel we would be better off to have a board meeting the following Tuesday. Where it's, the single meeting, there's no other meetings before or after us. And it's only for, to be more productive and, and get more out of our meeting time.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. B, and Dr. Berman, you want to move the meeting to six thirty, right?
Well, our, the bylaws only, the bylaw that we're asking to be changed only address the uh. The second Tuesday of the month, we want to move that to the third. It doesn't address the time, but generally we're, we're six thirty.
Right, because we will have to advertise that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, right, we do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Berman.
Thank you. And Frank, Dylan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, item number two on the agenda then, the pool contract. I mean, we don't need a motion for that, right? We can just say there was discussion in a work session and that item is going to be postponed until a later date?
Well, I'm, I'll, I'll just chime in that I recommend that it be postponed to a later date, that's why we work on it.
Okay, okay, when we get to it, after item one, then we're good, okay, sounds good. We good to go to the meeting then? Okay, uh, Peter, we can just segue into the, into the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is Ray Weldy, chairman of Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome to the January 27th, 2021 public meeting of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors at seven forty-four PM. To uh, begin the meeting, could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Originally on the agenda, uh, there was an executive session scheduled for six PM to seven PM tonight. That executive session was canceled um, earlier this afternoon. Due to the uh, a health issue with the township manager, the township manager is unable to be here tonight, so Mr. Galdo is not in his meeting. Um, that, that executive session was canceled and it was posted um, on the township's website and the township channel, so the residents were advised. The board did meet uh, and held a public work session at seven PM. Uh, when we met in work session, the board spoke to our building code officer Mike Italia. Um, and received an update um, on the process and the progress of the transition from tri-state engineers to CKS engineers. Um, that was approved back on January 4th. We also received the notice from Mr. Italia that the proposed car wash. Um, for the intersection of Old Street Road and Philmon Avenue, the car wash was abandoning its plans to uh, seek. Building the approval to build a car wash there. The board also spoke to uh, Mr. Italian, a solicitor regarding uh, a proposed food truck ordinance. And a food cart that was located within, that is located within a township um, at the intersection of Bridgetown Pike and Busselton Pike. The board also spoke um, regarding item, agenda item number three, the sketch plan. That will be brought up later for two thirty-five Andrews Road with our building code officer. And finally, agenda item number two, the board spoke to our park and recreation director. Regarding a possible pool contract for the 2021 uh, summer season for the pools at the Dolphin Club and Fertabar Pool. We'll address that issue when it comes up. Uh, first thing on the agenda tonight would be public comment. Uh, the public was invited to send any comments or questions in to public comment at LowerSouthHamptonTownship.org. I'll ask uh, our administrative secretary, Ms, Mrs. Lynn, if there's any comment to be read into the record. Or Peter?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there are no public comments tonight.
Thank you. Seeing if there's no public comment, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is item number one on tonight's agenda list. The first would be item one A, approval of the minutes, January 4th, 2021. Uh, second would be item one B, approval of accounts payable, January 27th, 2021. I will mention that under item one B, the approval of the accounts payable would be. Uh, include the approval of all the accounts payable in that list for January 27th, except for vendor five-two-nine-eight. Um, at the beginning of the packet, that vendor is Genova Burns, the township's labor attorney involving a case Ottinger versus Lower Southampton Township. For this uh, fee of one thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars, that item will be voted upon separately. Item one C would be the approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, January 27th, 2021. Item one D, ratify approval of accounts payable, January 15th, 2021. Item one E, ratify approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, January 15th, 2021. Item one F, approval of two construction escrow releases for toner homes. Huntington Reserve Project in the amounts of sixty-five thousand four hundred eleven dollars thirty cents. And forty-eight thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars thirty cents. Item one G, approval of construction escrow release for Watts seventeen zero four Busselton Pike. In the amount of fifty-seven thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars ten cents. Approval of item one H, professional fee escrow release for Amos and Tova Epstein. One zero nine Beers and Boy Pike Circle Project in the amount of three hundred dollars. Item one I, approval of professional fee escrow release for Anna Morrison. One six two nine Busselton Pike Project in the amount of three hundred dollars and finally.
Bridge Town, right?
I'm sorry, Bridge Town Pike. I'll repeat it, item one I, approval of professional fee escrow release for Anna Morrison. One six two nine Bridge Town Pike Project in the amount of three hundred dollars, thank you. And item one J, approval of professional fee escrow release for Watts Properties. One seven zero four Busselton Pike Project in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve items consent agenda one A through one J as read?
Uh. Which one was the, going to be held for the, which, which listing was going to be held for the attorney for Ottinger?
Yeah, as Ray said, that would be handled separately.
That'll be handled separately, that's one, that's one item and one B, we'll vote on that separately.
Okay, thank you.
And, and uh, Mike, are you available? Are you online?
Yeah, what's up, Pete?
Do you want to mention about toner and Watts escrow release? The statement that it says it's a LOC and uh, it's a drawdown.
Yeah, Watts is a cash payout. Toner is a drawdown on their line of credit, that's all. So one, we write a check, the other one, it's just a paperwork thing. That's all.
Okay. And you, you approved both of those, Mike, right?
Yeah, you're going to see a lot of these, we're cleaning up, but yes, and everything you get is supporting documentation and is approved, yeah, you're good.
Thank you. Then we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda is read?
I'll make that motion.
Motion be, made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings, we'll do a roll call vote then, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Koutziratis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and Ray Weldy, I vote yes, so that motion passes with a vote of five zero. Um, second up on, on, also under the consent agenda, item one B. Would be a separate severed payment um, to vendor number five-two-nine-eight. Any accounts payable for January 27th, 2021, that vendor is Genova Burns. The township's Lower Southampton's Labor Attorney involving a case Ottinger versus Lower Southampton Township. For the um, amount of one thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars. Um, would anyone make, we would need a motion then to pass that separate payment, anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion also.
Made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second, that's happened.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Koutziratis?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and Ray Weldy, I vote yes, uh, that motion to pay that separate bill passes uh, with, by a three to two margin. Um, item two was listed as to consider of awarding of the 2021 pool contracts for the Dolphin Swim Club and Fertabar Pool. There was some conversation before in the work session, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dylan for an explanation.
Uh, yes, it was my recommendation that we not act on this matter this evening, that there are certain things in the contract. That need to be resolved and uh, the discussion was that, that we had in the session was the payment schedule. And what happens i- in the event that we're shut down, so we need to resolve those issues before acting on the contract, so. My recommendation is you take any action on that this evening.
Okay, um, do we need a motion to do that or can that item just be postponed, Frank?
You can just postpone it.
Thank you, so item number two on the agenda is postponed until a later date, we'll move on to item number three. Which is consider approval of a sketch plan for SEBA Cable Inc., Sebastian. Bill, Billadain, Billadainu, owner of the property located at two-three-five Andrews Road, Feasterville, PA. Tax parcel number two-one dash zero-two-three dash zero-one-seven dash zero-one-six. I'll turn this over to uh, Mr. Italia and I believe the, the builder's representative is here to um, give us a, an update and a summary of what's being proposed.
That's correct, um, thank you, Ray. Uh, Justin is here um, from the builder and um, also Johnny Varts, the township engineer from CKS should be on. Justin, uh, you want to go ahead with it? Justin, you there?
Who was that six-ten number?
Yeah, he was on the phone. While, while we're figuring out him, Pete, can you uh, try to see if you can get him muted? Um, or is John here, Varts?
I am.
John, you want to comment? And uh, what you'd say?
Uh, yeah, it's a minimum sketch plan for a seven thousand one hundred fifty foot square warehouse. Um, it's on an existing parcel in uh, an industrial park. It's an existing detention basin that controls stormwater from the existing uh, industrial park. They are proposing to fill. industrial park. They are proposing to fill a portion of the basin to accommodate and additional parking.
What's, what's the building going to be of just a warehouse for?
Yeah, John.
Yeah, it stores, I guess the owner is the telecommunications. They have, they're storing cables and associated purchases.
And what's going to be in the warehouse, do you know?
Uh, cabling and then associated materials. I guess he runs telecommunication lines.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Right, the traffic would be mostly important to load up the trucks and out. And we're not talking a ton. Just a handful to load up, plenty of parking, and the stormwater management system would be significantly approved of that area surroundings. Fully supported unanimously by the planning commission to the next step to go towards asking preliminary his final approval when they come in. So you'll be seeing this in a couple of months again.
Was there any, any residents around there that needed to be considered?
Yeah, no, no, nobody at all. The sketch plan doesn't get sent out. When the next plan comes in, they would all see that, but very low impact. The biggest impact would be the Jersey Avenue side, and they would actually see probably improved runoff and surrounding conditions that, because it's pretty overgrown. So there was, were some concerns of somewhere large cats in there or possibly like cougars. I don't know. They made some comments, like there was some wildlife in there concerned.
It's heavily overgrown.
Hey, Mike, can I ask you one question? And that has to do with the saldo for the sidewalks. I mean, you, you know, the saldo requires sidewalks, and there's no sidewalks back there. And what we've, what we've done over the past year instead, is instead of just waiving that requirement for, I don't know, a return for planting so many more trees or whatever happened, we kind of suspended that requirement. So in the event the sidewalks were ever required in the future, then the developer and the township would both partner in absorbing the cost instead of the township totally absorbing the cost.
Well, you can do a fee in lieu where you, you take a fee in lieu of requiring sidewalks, but then if, if you need them in the future, you would then have to pay it. But you have to evaluate whether it's even necessary or appropriate.
We did talk about that. John, you want to mention that?
Yeah, I've also seen a deferred, that you haven't put on the plan for the, when you granted the waiver, that if any improvements were anticipated in the future, that that cost can be put towards it. It's kind of up to the township if they wanted to put it in. If somebody on Jersey Avenue wanted to put sidewalk on there, it's just deferred in the future that the applicant is responsible for that.
Okay. And, and Mike, I have one more question. Is the sewer hookup back there for the industrial park, would that be the same sewer hookup that the proposed apartment down on, just below the senior center would be using?
I don't know. I would defer to, don't know what, and that's something I believe we did talk about, that it would look during their preliminary, preliminary plan, that they would address that. Very lit, and so just to let you know, capacity wise, they would have probably maybe two toilets as sink and a water counter there. So very minimal use, probably less than your average house.
Mike, what, what type of buffer zone would be required? Because there is one house on Summers Avenue, and then I believe a few houses on, on Jersey Street.
Yeah, I believe.
Yeah, there's, the engineer issued a review letter, setting forth those requirements, the applicants aware of them, and you need to assess the location of the building and the location of the houses. And that's again, something we will deal with in land development.
Yeah, not a problem. It, it was all taken care of that night. We did not see any issues with that.
So, Mike, you would recommend approving this sketch plan then at this juncture?
Yes, I would.
Okay. I don't know if the board has any more questions before we move on.
Anything else we need to know, Mike?
Uh, no, it's just, it's, it's going to improve the stormwater. That's, I think that's the biggest gain for the township, because that, that facility is very tricky.
I, I think the applicant was just looking for this input to see if there was any opposition to the plan. You actually, when it comes before you, then you vote on the approval or disapproval.
So are we voting on a sketch plan today?
Well, I think they're just looking for your input that you're in favor of it, so they can proceed with going to, you know, more detailed plans. So is, am I right?
Yeah, see that, that's the right one.
So I, I think the consensus is they're in favor of it, want to see it, see what the improvements, so.
So there's no vote needed, Frank, correct?
No, not now.
Okay.
So they'll be coming in for preliminary final approval up by the planning commission. You'll see.
All right, thank you, Mike. We're good to move on to item number four then?
Yes.
Okay, item number four would be to consider an approval of a change in the Lower Southampton Township Library's bylaws. And there's been a proposal to change the meeting date and time. And I'll, I'll turn that over. I, I don't know.
Barry Bowman still there?
If Mr., if Dr. Bowman is still here, maybe Dr. Bowman could give us the same executive summary that he did in the work session?
Well, maybe not.
Maybe not.
I think, let me see, the, the request was, um, they want to change it to the third Tuesday of every month at 6:30 PM. Dr. Bowman indicated that it was for the convenience of the board members and to avoid a conflict with another meeting.
Okay.
I think a motion would be appropriate to authorize the change in the meeting night and allow them to amend their bylaws.
Are there any questions from the board members before a motion would be proposed?
He just wants to do it for convenience purposes, right? Makes it easier for them? That's my understanding anyway, so.
It also doesn't, like, there's, there's another meeting, they're friends at the library before, and there's some people, there's some members that are in both meetings, and sometimes the meeting goes over and it's just, um, it's just better for the library to do it on another night.
Makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah.
So then we would need a motion to consider the approval of the change in the library board's bylaws to change their meeting dates. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Deb Kaplan.
Made by Ms. Kaplan, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. We'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So the bylaw approval is, is approved by a vote of 5-0. Seeing as that concludes the items on the agenda, we'll move to the manager's report. Peter, if you could.
I do have a list. Feel free to jump in. This is the list from the manager. There is a township cleanup day scheduled for April 24th, 9:00 AM on Saturday. Anyone have information? Please charm in.
I have a question. And Matt, you could probably answer this question. Is there a limit on how, how much a resident can bring to be shredded?
Uh, no, we do not have a limit on shredding.
Thank you.
As far as electronic recycling, we are limited to the capacity of the truck. Last year, the gentleman brought two trucks, and we did fill both, but we were able to collect all the electronics recycling that was brought to the township building. So it's definitely suggested to get here first, and residency will be verified for the electronic recycling. We don't foresee a capacity problem with shredding. We never have. And we'll still be doing cleanup as well, although more than likely, we're going to skip the morning refreshments and the, the lunch following, just due to gathering reasons and sanitation with food service. We'll be coordinating groups and dispatching groups to identified locations throughout the township.
So Matt, what time do you want volunteers to show up at the township building?
I'm going to try and coordinate a lot of that prior to having to come to the township building. I'm hoping to do a lot of it via email or through the township's website to, you know, let me know you have a group of three or four or, or more. And we'll kind of dispatch those folks based on ability and, you know, the necessary areas to be cleaned up. I'm going to try and coordinate a lot of it virtually. We're, we're trying to avoid any kind of gathering or meeting in the morning like we, we're used to, but we still want to get out there and clean up. There's a lot, a lot of areas I see around town that need it.
So, so people that want to volunteer, you're going to e, do they email you to register or something? So then you tell them where you want them to be? I'm not clear exactly.
Yep. And, and what I will be doing here shortly is putting something out for the newsletter. I did see a newsletter go out today. I hope to have something, a paragraph be very specific to, to direct those folks how to contact me. And in some cases, it might even be easier with a phone call, and then I can, you know, manage an Excel spreadsheet from my desk to who's going to what areas.
Okay, Feasterville, where do we will be volunteering this year?
Wonderful. We really look forward to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding Cleanup Day? There, there is going to be more information to come. I'm, I'm working on finalizing the shredding and the electronics before we make any kind of formal announcement regarding the additional cleanup measures. So I want it to be one all encompassing email.
Okay. Matt, with the, where the trucks were, people came in and they had to go around like in the loop? Will the shredding be in that same area, or will the shredding trucks be at a separate location?
I think it, we had pretty good flow through the parking lot. I, I wouldn't see an immediate need to change that. Unless maybe the, they bring a different sized truck or something like that, and, and we would adjust accordingly.
Matt, the TVs, was that still an issue?
Well, it's, a lot of people have utilized electronic recycling for the past several years. Unfortunately, we didn't get to do Cleanup Day in 2020, but we, we've seen each year get a little bit less. So we're hoping that everyone who's had those old, large tube TVs and things like that have, have already gotten rid of them and, and upgraded. So the, we don't foresee an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Great. We're looking forward to Cleanup Day. Stay tuned to the website and the newsletter. We're, we're going to be putting out information here shortly once I get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The second item, in 2020, there will be sanitation rebate, which will be running from February 8th to July 31st. And, and you want to have a question, please feel free to call, contact me and look for Peter. Uh, next item is a TSE, TSE, tri-state engineer related item. If there are any outstanding tasks or projects that need to be completed, please share and, and discuss here.
Yeah, and we, we spoke to Mr. Italia about that in the work session. We were given an update on that, and that'll be in the work session minutes too. I think, was that right, Mike? That's, that's what the intent of this was?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly it. It was just to give you a scope of what we have left, what, what's left open.
Yeah, we're, we're coordinating that, and it's going smoothly so far.
Good. Thank you.
Next item on the manager's report is the budgeted salary increase. However, the cancellation of the executive session, disregard that.
Right. We'll, we'll revisit that in February. Anything else, Peter, for the manager's report?
That's it.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go down to supervisors' comments. Ms. Cummings?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I want to recognize Mark and Kevin. We got a really nice letter from one of our residents, Sharon Rogers, who complimented them on their quick response to a sign that she had wanted put up. So we want to thank our employees for, you know, the prompt attention and, you know, it was nice that they were recognized with that. And wanted to, I wanted to thank Mike for the, well, and all the staff for the smooth transition with CKS. It's always hard, sometimes when, you know, somebody's new coming in to, you know, start new and get everything wrapped up from the years before. So they seem to be doing a great job with that. I also wanted to mention, I saw on social media, I saw a, I saw a really nice thing. There was one of our residents, Ed Packer, has done a thing that's called 30, 30 and 30. So he's been going around to different establishments in the community, and he's really been highlighting just wonderful things about all of our restaurants and shops and all here in Lower Southampton. So I want to thank him for, you know, taking the time and, you know, going out and doing that. I thought it was nice to, you know, see a nice article about each of the, the establishments here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Kim, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah, yeah. You know, just want to piggyback on what Sue had said with Kevin and Mark, job well done, guys. You know, we actually have some of the best employees in this township. Kevin and Mark are terrific, but all of our employees are terrific, and I just want to thank them all for all their hard work they do every day. And not a comment, but a question for Matt. Matt, I apologize. I should have brought it up when you were talking about Cleanup Day. But I know you're really not taking donations for food items like you generally do, but can, can we donate like disposable gloves? Or is there anything else you may need for that?
Yeah. That's a really good question. In, in previous years, we put out a letter to businesses and other previous donors for things that we need, such as food and water and things like that. I can say right now that in working with the state with Keep America Beautiful, they do provide us with gloves and vests, although we're probably going to need some additional things, possibly some bags. Once I can contact them and, and have a list of what they're going to provide us, then I'll know what we'll need in addition to that. And, and reach out to those folks who in years past would donate typically, you know, food or beverage, something like that, and try and encourage them to see if they're able to provide a more material cleanup asset.
All right. I'll, I'll be reaching out to you then, Matt, to see, you know, what you might need, because we can, we can do something too with, with my business also.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt. That's it, Ray.
Thank you, Kim. Next up would be Mr. Shannon. Ed?
Yes, thank you. It was nice to have a quick meeting tonight. That's really great. We've had some long ones in the past, but this is really pretty nice. The Cleanup Day, Feasterville Business Association, we have a meeting next week, Wednesday, and I'm hoping that we can get some of the guys there, guys and girls, to help with the cleanup. In addition to that, the Knights of Columbus, and Mark and Kevin, they did an hell of a nice job with that lady with the blind child. So anyway, they, really nice stuff. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Ms. Kaplan, Deb?
I too would like to mention, thank you to the resident. I don't have a hard copy in front of me. Thank you for the resident that did that wonderful e- I too would like to mention, thank you to the resident. I don't have the hard copy in front of me. Thank you for the resident that did that wonderful email about Kevin from our zoning and Mark from Public Works, and I'm paraphrasing what she said, but how they were wonderful ambassadors representing the township. And that is so great to hear, and she's new to our township. So that was really to take the time to write that email. It was really, it was really great to see. And I just wanted to say thank you to the resident for writing that. And yes, we do have wonderful employees here in the township. And it's so nice that a resident will call out some employees on the the outstanding work that they do and to compliment them. And don't forget to go on our Feasterville Libraries Facebook page and the Lower Southampton Township, which is the same. I don't, they have different names, but Lower Southampton Township website. There is virtual games and virtual book reading. So they're offering a lot. So I hope you get to enjoy that. And thank you for those who are watching, and I'll turn it over to you, Ray.
Thank you, Deb. On top of the kudos, I won't repeat them for Mark and and Kevin Kirk, but I'd also like to thank Mark for yesterday's action plan and for keeping the board apprised of his plan to treat the roads for yesterday's morning, yesterday morning's ice event that really never materialized, but the roads were pre-treated and Public Works was ready in the event that they were needed. And fortunately, that didn't happen. But thank you, Mark, for that and for the plannings that you did for that. And the only other thing I have is I'd like to thank and congratulate Officer Kyle Heasley of the Lower Southampton Township Police Department and his K nine dog Arrow for successfully completing police K nine training recently. Both of them went through some long, enduring, challenging training and graduated successfully. I'd like to congratulate them both. They both are also taking on some additional training, but a job well done. And that's all I have. If there's nothing further, if there's no further business for the board, we would need a motion to adjourn?
Take that motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Deb, Ms. Kaplan made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for listening and have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Have a good evening. Good night.